Yeah, really.
Tomorrow.
Oh, yeah, yeah. Forgot about that. Got to be here again tomorrow.
I'm going to call a meeting to order. Roll call, please.
Mayor Crawford.
Here.
Commissioner Blanchard.
Here.
Commissioner Davis.
Here.
Commissioner Hardy.
Here.
Commissioner Ryan.
Here.
And let's stand and say Pledge of Allegiance in a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, thank you. We have no awards and proclamations, but we do have Citizens Forum. If there's anyone who'd like to come before the commission and speak on an item that is not on the agenda, you're welcome to do so. Okay. Public hearings and items for certain time?
Item 5.1, public hearing on the proposed 2017 budget. 5.1A, second reading ordinance number 16-10853. And 5.1B, resolution number 16-7391, adopting the position, classification, and salary schedule for city employees for 2017.
Okay, I'll open the public hearing on... Any comments on the public hearing, or on the, I'm sorry, on the budget? Proposed 2017 budget? Any commission? Any public hearing? Nothing? Okay, close the public hearing and entertain a motion on second reading.
Madam Chairman, I move we approve on second reading ordinance number 1510853.
Second.
There's a motion and a second on item 5.1A. Second reading ordinance number 1610853. Roll call.
Commissioner Blanchard.
Aye.
Commissioner Davis.
Aye. Just... According to... It should be 16-10853.
Well, I read from the agenda.
On the agenda has it written wrong.
Maybe we need to clarify.
But on the blue sheet it is 16.
16, yeah. So, yeah. Amend my motion to clarify the correctness.
Okay. There's a motion and a second?
Second.
Second, all right. City Clerk, go.
Commissioner Blanchard.
Aye.
Commissioner Davis.
Aye.
Commissioner Hardy.
Aye.
Commissioner Ryan.
Aye.
Mayor Crawford.
Aye. Resolution number 1673.
Move that we approve resolution number 16-7391, adopting the position, classification, and salary schedule for city employees for 2017. Second.
Okay, then motion and a second to pass resolution 167391. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Five, zero. And I'm happy to report that we have not raised a mill levy. And we've also passed a 2% increase for city employees. Okay. Public hearing and... I'm sorry. Let's wait a minute here. I guess we need to move to the consent agenda?
Item 6.1, approve the minutes of August 8, 2016. Item 6.2, approve resolution number 16-7390, authorizing the city manager to permit the muscular dystrophy association to solicit within the city's rights of way utilizing off-duty Solana firefighters. And item 6.3, approve changes to the Declaration of Covenants, conditions, and restrictions for the Georgetown Village Townhomes.
Okay, do we have a motion? Is there anything on the consent agenda any commissioner would like to have pulled? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
Madam, I move... Madam Chairman, I move we approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
Have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda as printed. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Administration.
Item 7.1, first reading ordinance number 16-10854, levying special assessments against certain lots and pieces of property to pay the cost of abatements of nuisances.
Michelle.
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. These next two items, items 7.1 and 7.2, are both for assessments that will be levied against certain property owners. This one is for nuisance abatements, which is primarily for lawn mowing, cleaning up of properties after homeowners are notified and then they do not complete the process themselves. City staff or contractors have to do the work. And the cost is then billed back to them. Everyone has had a chance to pay these fines upfront or pay the fees. We are still taking payments up until the second reading next week. We have bailed out about $81,000. Almost $10,000 was paid. So, the remaining amount to be assessed for the nuisance abatements is $71,540.91, pending any changes before second reading.
Okay, are there any questions, Michelle?
Yeah, this... Gary may be able to answer this better because you're... This is your first shot at this. On a year-over-year, how is this related to past years?
We have increased this year. With our two full-time staff members, we've had an increase in volume of amount of abatements we have completed. And so, the numbers have gone up. Therefore, the dollar amount associated with those numbers would also go up.
Okay. And then I... Do we have a new contractor this year on that contract? And just kind of curious, how's that been working out?
We do have a new contractor this year. He, at times, struggles to keep up with what we've got him doing. As of example today, I know there's six going to him to abate within the next 48 hours. So, it's a challenge for him to keep up sometimes. We have some pretty good-sized projects that we do, so... But other than that, he's... His fees have been quite reasonable this year compared to some in the past. But, yeah, he's working as hard and diligent as he can.
Okay, great. Thank you.
And I have a question, too. Once again, Mr. Hobbie might be able to handle this one. Are there perpetual customers on this list? It seem to repeat year after year.
Yes, sir. We do have what we classify as a perennial violator. And once we get through this August and into September, then we will start looking at that list of those who've been notified three times or greater with... Or having abatements of properties of three times or greater. So, we will be sending those to the municipal court system to work through our process.
Any other questions?
I just like perennial violator.
I do. That is a... That's a much better term.
It's a pleasant way to put it.
Our staff says, "I've been here before."
Right.
Same terms.
Okay, if there's no other questions, thank you, Michelle. Entertain a motion on ordinance number 1610854.
And Mayor, move approval on first reading ordinance number 16-10854, levying special assessments against certain lots and pieces of property to pay the cost of abatements of nuisances.
Second.
Okay, have a motion and a second to pass on first reading ordinance number 1610854. Any other discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And those opposed, same sign. Five, oh. Okay, I guess you're back up here, Michelle, on sidewalks.
Thank you again, Mayor, Commission. This is ordinance 16-10855, to levy special assessments against certain lots and pieces of property to pay the cost of repair of sidewalks. This is when city staff go out and have to make the determination that sidewalks in front of property is unsafe or inadequate. Notice is provided to the owners to have the repair done themselves. They have that opportunity. If that's not done within a specified timeframe, then the city does contract that out and the cost is billed back to the homeowner. Again, homeowners were given some opportunity to pay these. And whoever did not make the decision to pay them by the deadline, they will go onto the tax rolls. About $28,000 is attached to this for 21 properties. And again, we are still taking payments until next week. One second reading occurs.
Any questions, Michelle?
Yeah, on the sidewalk part, on that special assessment, is that... Is that a lump sum? Is that a... Is it provided as a lump sum or is it provided like over a five-year period?
It's broken up, isn't it? It's broken up over five years.
Okay. And so, if the person were to say not be on this special assessment part, could they pay the first installment? Or would they have to pay the lump sum upfront?
Once it's assessed, they can make the payments. They don't have to make the lump sum.
Okay, but unless it's assessed, they pay the lump sum?
Yes.
Okay. Do we find that a lot of people are opting for the... Rather than pay it to take that?
Yeah, there's more people that are on the list than have come in and paid, yes.
And could we do it... Could it be cheaper for them if we had a program where we offered them that option of to have a special assessment done on it? You understand the question? What would the cost be if we had a sidewalk program that said, "If you'd like to have your thing paid, you can do a special assessment and pay it off in five years," versus having the city do the mailings and the reporting and the everything else?
Yeah, there's probably a couple of ways to look at that. If we truly use the special assessment tool, the formality, that probably wouldn't work because that's districts. And even though it might be a one-lot district, there's too much paperwork and all that to go with it. So, we probably wouldn't do that. One way you could possibly do it is you could have it where the city fronts the cost. And if you sign an agreement and enter into a repayment schedule, which means if someone leaves or whatever decides they don't want to pay, you're going to have to chase them for that. But that's one way you could do that. Possibly, you could require some of that upfront or something like that. So, there's a lot of ways you could do that. A lot of communities do that just simply because whatever the rules are pretty consistent from community to community and even state to state with regards to sidewalks and sidewalk maintenance. But a lot of people, you know, don't maintain their sidewalk and then they're forced to by the city. Some people do respond when they're given a notice to take care of it. And of course, some people don't wait for a notice. They take care of it when they need to and they see the need to do that. But I think it's hard to speculate how many people would participate if we offered it from the beginning. I don't know. I think that's a good question. It'd be hard to tell. We'd just have to... Something like that, we'd just have to try it to see if we were going to do that, I think. I don't know if, Gary, you've dealt with those a long time. You might have some thoughts.
Actually, the engineering department takes care of those. And Bill goes out and looks at those and tries to work with the neighbors or the owners of the property to come into some type of compliance and agreement. If they can't, then we go through the process of going through the notice period and that type of thing. There's an appeal process. If the owner does feel like they've been... It's a wrong decision of the inspector being out there. And that goes through the building advisory board. And we've had a couple who actually went to the building advisory board to be appealed. But it was upheld by the board that the city inspector did the appropriate notification and process, so.
Okay. And then do we... Are these all... Are all the abatements that we do on these, are they all pouring new panels? Because what makes me think of that is what we've done out at Sunset Park, where we've ground down some of the sidewalks to kind of take the tripping hazard out of it and so on. We don't do any of that in sidewalk abatement. Is it all just?
I'm sure we probably ground a sidewalk or two. Whether we've charged that back and then abated that particular task, I don't know. I'd have to check. I'd have to ask engineering.
Dan Stack probably would be able to answer that better than...
And I ask because, I mean, it's... I think it's Sunset Park and to the sidewalks that are east of Sunset, coming on on the east side of it. I noticed a lot of those sidewalks have been done. And it's a nice... It looks like it'd be a nice, cost-effective way to do it because otherwise, you've got a new panel in there and then the rest of the sidewalk's about ready to fall apart anyway, so.
Yeah, we've had a lot of property owners, when they fix their own sidewalks, that's one of the things they'll do. Seems like with our contractors, we've just typically gotten a cost for just removing and replacing the sidewalk. So, it is... We could try to get a cost maybe for grinding them down. Usually, if they're beyond grinding, that's when the people are like, "I'll just do it." You know, they don't really want to mess with it at that point. Or they'll hire their own contractor. The grinding gets to be too onerous. But if it's just the minimum gap or the minimum trip hazard, then sometimes the property owners can grind it or hire somebody around here to grind it down. We haven't offered that service yet, so I guess we could.
Dan, do you have any idea what... How the cost of grinding, say, you know, along a panel would... Compared to replacing the panel would be?
We don't. It's a good question. We've had... What's it called? Kansas Coring and Cutting has a grinder that can do the work and it's per hour and the machine's pretty expensive. And so, when we get $4.25 a square foot approximately for replacing a four-by-four panel, so I'm just doing the math here, but it's almost... It's not a whole lot of difference if you actually replace the panel. So, it's one thing if you have your own... If you have the labor and want to do it yourself with your angle grinder or your saw or whatever you have, yeah, then it's actually cost-effective. But actually hire Kansas Coring and Cutting to do it and grind it off. They'd have to do quite a few of them to make it worth their while to move the machine over there and unload it. And it's... I think that's probably why it hasn't been done a whole lot of. But it's something we could ask them and see, I guess. Most of the time, the sidewalks repairing or not, the grinding is not... That's usually they're way worse off than that. That would be the minimum.
Broken crack panels and everything else.
Yeah, it's... They're beyond repair at that point. So, that's... I have to think that's what we normally get into. Our city staff, when we maintain Sunset Park, around the city county building, you'll see it, our parks, any of our facilities, yeah, our guys can grind pretty easily. Or that's something that we do because our sidewalks usually aren't that bad. They've got a trip hazard, but they're not just shattered and demolished. So, it's a long answer to your question to say we haven't looked a whole lot into it. But I have a better... I can have a better answer for you next year.
Okay. Well, the goal is just accessibility, so, you know, just to have them... It's no good to have handicap ramps everywhere if the concrete in between them is impassable, so.
Right. Thank you.
Before they ever... I was just going to ask you. But before they ever get to this list, they've had several notices, right?
They did. Yeah, they did. And like I said, it's around $2 a square foot to remove it and $4 to replace it. So, sometimes they know it's just, well, it's just easier to... I shouldn't say easier. It's just too much of a hassle to find somebody to do it. And it's, you know, a couple hundred bucks here or there and they don't... They just have us do it. But the larger ones or the people who are... We give them a list of the right-of-way contractors and they have the opportunity. I'd say this year, we've had about half in general. About half of them will replace it themselves or find somebody to replace it. And then the other half just go to abatement. Sometimes they just don't care enough to worry about it or it's not a large enough number to... They'd rather... They like the five-year... I'd say the five-year thing is pretty nice for them. Some people, they can't afford it at one time.
Are most of these over in the older areas of town, do you think? I mean, or can... Or do you know?
They're just complaint-based, so it's...
So, it's, yeah. Could be anywhere.
A lot of the newer areas don't have sidewalks.
No, that's a good point. You can kind of tell the area of development based on sidewalks or not. But, you know, a lot of the newer areas, the sidewalks, the ones that do have them have been there long enough, you could see issues with them. But there's no question, the core areas have more sidewalks, they're older sidewalks. You have more mature trees and other factors. So, I'm sure... Well, I'm sure if you really look... If you ask the question, are you going to find more sidewalk issues in the core areas? The answer would be yes, I would expect.
Yeah, that makes common sense, I guess. Okay, thank you.
Would the city bundle projects, sidewalk projects, then, to make them more cost-effective when they're done?
Well, for our abatement process, that's kind of what we do. Wouldn't we hire a... We've actually got a contractor hired for 2016, like this year, to... Can we kind of estimate the quantity and how much we have this year thus far? And so, we give them enough of a project to make it worth their while to mobilize and actually do the work. The problem is, they're not always in the same, you know, not always in a nice confined area. It's they... They're a little more cost... They cost us more because the other have to... We may have 1,000 square foot, but it's here and here and here and all over town. And just people that weren't... They don't want to repair them themselves. So, it's... But at least we have a... Instead of just hiring a contractor every time for 10 square feet, we try to bundle it. And that does... It's a challenge because we get these all year long and we try to maintain a timeframe so that people know that we are serious, that we're actually going to have to replace them. And we have to follow up. We have to send them notices. Then we have to send them a final notice. Then we actually tell them when we're going to do the work. And even sometimes then, they'll say, "Okay, stop it. I'll fix it now." And so, it's always a little bit of a challenge to make sure that actually happens, but... Well, I'll answer your question again.
So, the citizen may be getting a decent price for having the work done by the city as opposed to going out and trying to find a contractor?
Yeah, you'd think so. If they know somebody or if they have, you know, somebody who's working in the neighborhood that's already working or pouring a driveway, that's the best thing for them to get a contractor for it. But $6.25 a square foot is not terribly uncommon for, you know, a few panels here and there. That's what we're about, what we're getting. And I'm not sure if they can get a whole lot better price. There are some fees that the city charges, is that right? Some administration fees and the filing fee at the courthouse. And there's some fees that they can get out of if they do it themselves. Or if they, like I said, go with their neighbors or have a bigger project, they could probably get a better price. But, yeah, it's not a... We don't feel like it's a really outrageous price that we're getting currently. Local contractor does it every year, so it's... I guess that's all I know on that.
Okay. Anything else? Any other questions about sidewalks? All right, public comment, Judy.
One area that seems to be neglected are brick sidewalks. And I have come close to falling numerous times because of the neglect of brick sidewalks. And I think I need you to take that into consideration when you're doing all this stuff. Thank you.
Thank you, Judy.
Yeah, Commissioners, I think to help Judy and others that walk in areas that may have brick sidewalks, if they find those sidewalks, it doesn't really matter what the material is, if they're a hazard, if they just report them to us, we'll make sure and get them over to engineering and start following up with the property owners and then go from there.
Okay. Okay. Is that all we have on sidewalks? Okay. Entertain a motion on ordinance number 1610855.
I move approval on first reading ordinance number 16-10855, levying special assessments against certain lots and pieces of property to pay the cost of the repair of sidewalks.
Okay, have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second to pass on first reading ordinance number 11610855. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And those opposed, same sign. Okay, five, oh. 7.3.
Item 7.3, resolution number 16-7392, authorizing the mayor to enter into a consulting agreement with Development Services, Inc., for the purpose of providing a market, economic, and financial feasibility study related to the proposed downtown revitalization Star Bond project.
Okay, Mr. Gage.
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. We... Not too long ago, we talked about Star Bond step and we dealt with the bond underwriter. And you allowed us to engage with an entity for that, with Stifel. And one of the first questions we had of them is the recommendation for a firm to conduct what we call a third-party financial feasibility and kind of revenue projection analysis for you as a governing body. And they recommended Development Strategies. And Development Strategies has done this for some time. They are out of St. Louis. They've been doing it since 1988. And they are highly recommended. And we had a small-scope project in which they've provided us a report dealing with Lambert's addition, tax increment finance district. That includes the Coles and Longhorn and other stores, other businesses there. We were very happy with that. All of our team felt that they were very highly qualified for this type of work. The point of this work is that it gives you an independent third-party review. That's kind of the final piece that you would take into consideration is then you determine if and what level of... Or what number of Star Bonds you would issue the amount. We are approved by the State Department of Commerce for an amount up to $19.1 million. We know that. And that's, of course, contingent upon approving the TIF and Star Bond plans. Eventually, you'll have a... We expect the Community Improvement District petition that you would look at and potentially create a district for that as well. And we have that plan as included in the Star Bond piece right now. But those are all the pieces that are coming up. You've got a couple of public hearings next week. But what this will do is, we think it'll help you determine that amount. And so, at the point that we get this report, we'll have a discussion and then you'll get to determine what you want that amount to be. And so, that gives you all the risk factors and so forth. We feel it's a due diligence piece. It's not a piece you have to do, but is a piece that's highly recommended by bond counsel and the financial advisor as well as your staff. It's not a truly inexpensive piece. The cost is not to exceed $62,000. It could be less than that depending on the rates and reimbursable expenses. The timeframe of 60 days is actually pretty aggressive. We expected 90 to 120, but we did want to impress the time is pretty important right now and tried to get it back as soon as possible. So, 60 is actually pretty aggressive for this. Some of the things they'll do, they'll look at all the relevant information surrounding the project plan and the various components, so they're familiar with that. They'll talk with stakeholders and analysts, just get their thoughts and opinions, evaluate the local, the state, regional, macroeconomic, and macro demographic data and trends, evaluate all the market, economic, financial studies conducted specifically for the project. Those studies are out there. Provide an opinion regarding project revenue projections and their basis, prepare a formal market, economic, financial feasibility report suitable for public review, an inclusion with the bond preliminary official statement, and eventually, an official statement for bonds. They'll provide a couple... Well, one or two formal presentations, whatever might be needed. I would imagine one would be sufficient. As I mentioned, 60 days is a timeline from beginning to end. Either party can terminate with seven days' notice if want to breach your failure to perform. We really don't expect that here. A cost not to exceed $62,000, which could be less. And then our standard agreement form is reviewed by legal counsel and the other legal fill-in terms are in there as well. With this particular piece, the city would, in essence, front the cost of this project with the expectation that if Star Bonds are issued, you will be reimbursed at that time. If for some reason they're not issued, then we paid for it and we have it. And that's really all I can say. We do believe when we look at the strategic plan, because it... This is a vital piece with the entire scope of work that you need to have occur in order to consider redevelopment project and Star Bonds and tax increment financing and so forth, that it does continue to fulfill goals 1, 3, and 5 in your strategic plan. That deals with the quality, mixed-use and quality development, quality services, and commitment to downtown. We have two options. One is approve the resolution 16-7392, authorizing the mayor to enter into the agreement with Development Strategies for the purpose of obtaining a market, economic, financial feasibility study related to the downtown Star Bond redevelopment project. The other option is do not approve that at this time. Certainly, we recommend option 1. And we'll be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Okay, any questions?
Looking at Exhibit A, responsibilities of the parties. And I just have a question on number... Number two and number five. Number two being when the stakeholder interviews. Can you get, give us an idea of how broad or how narrow we're defining stakeholder?
Quite honestly, I'd have to contact them. I don't want to speak on their behalf. But I would imagine that they would like to interview those who are directly related to the project or those, and/or those directly related, related to providing any information about the project. But I would have to ask them that question. I don't, wouldn't want to mistake that.
Okay, I mean, so, okay.
And on the other side of it, that could be on both sides, whether it be city or private. But I haven't asked, specifically asked that question, so I'm not sure who that list would include at this point.
Okay, and then on number five, kind of the same thing. Address questions and comments on the revenue projections and their basis received from city officials and the financial advisors.
Yeah, I think primarily that one would lead back to the revenue projections that were created probably by Kenyon Research and as it relates to the plan that's submitted on behalf of the private sector, the Slenet 2020 group. They'll look closely at those assumptions for sure as they compare those to their own analysis. And they certainly would want to address any questions and comments that there may be about that. They may have their own questions and comments they need, they have and questions they need answered. But that's what they're going to be focused on quite a lot.
And so, what, the, the report that they present, would it, would it be, would it be narrow in the sense that it's only going to address kind of what the projections and the cash flow analysis that they have for this project or will it look broad at implications that, that this project and the, and the levels of bonding and so on would have on, and this project would have on citywide?
When you say citywide.
Well, citywide being that we're, we're building a hotel down there.
Right.
And how will it affect other hotels?
Oh, I see.
If we're building a bowling alley, how will it affect other bowling alleys?
Yeah, I think it'll, it would include any analysis of any components that would relate back to increment being generated into the district compared to the community as a whole. I would expect them to look at the community as a whole and look at the district and then see how those two would interrelate. So, that I would expect to see.
But, but only to the extent of how it would affect the revenues coming into the downtown, not what it would be citywide?
Yeah, I, I think it would, yeah.
Generally speaking, if we're talking cannibalization, it wouldn't, it wouldn't deal with that or it would deal with that?
Yeah, I don't know for sure to what degree it would deal with that. I mean, they have to look at that, they would have to look at that to some degree because they know that any businesses that are considered increment generators or those who would, businesses that would actually in essence convey tax dollars or retail dollars and turn them into tax dollars and they come back to us, they would have to look at those in the full context because they have to determine, first of all, how successful do they believe that those businesses will be? In other words, what would be an occupancy of a hotel or what would, how successful would they expect a restaurant to be? And how many restaurants would they expect you to have, those types of things? So, they'd have to look at it to a certain degree just to focus on that. Now, if the question kind of becomes, well, will they be so specific to say how in essence you might be harmed based on a certain level of cannibalization to the general population, the general community? I don't know that they would be quite to that level and I'm not sure they could tell you as part of the problem too. Because quite honestly, it's really difficult because it comes back to some of the assumptions of how many more cars and feet are we, are going to be created. If there are no more cars and feet, then we know everything would be theoretically pure cannibalization. If there, if the goals are met, then we're talking about a new crowd. And there's still technically cannibalization, but then it's overcome by the new people and you don't see it, you don't feel it. So, I think you probably get somewhat of an idea of that based on their overall assumptions about the growth, the, the actual sales, the actual business demand that this is going to create. And if they feel it's going to be lower maybe than what we've seen or what, what is expected, then certainly you're going to see a higher level of cannibalization. So, I don't know if they can be specific to the cannibalization, but I think it's going to be inferred in their assumptions in, in their presentation of it, of the information.
It does seem kind of odd that we're doing this after instead of before.
Yeah.
Well, I mean, it seems like we should have done this maybe a couple of months ago. Maybe not. I don't know.
If you, if you remember, we'd actually talked about this some time ago. And then as we got to the, close to the end of the legislative session, we really wanted to start looking at that at that time, but we weren't sure where the legislation was going to go. And so, at that point, that sort of disrupted our timeframe there. And then quite honestly, the, we didn't have all the assumptions and they needed to see all the private sector assumptions for the project. That's something they'll have to look at. So, we needed to get all of that. We still don't have all of it because we don't have the, a CID petition yet. But I think we're pretty much with the plans that we have in place, have all the information they need. But they did need to see those plans and all the plan assumptions. So, we really haven't had those too long. As you recall, not that long ago, we set the public hearing, almost, well, about three weeks ago, we set the public hearing and that's when we really just kind of had the finished information. So, we're, from that perspective, we're pretty much on time. And again, their job is to reflect back and look at all this as well as collect their information and do some comparative. So, they'll have both fresh information and a critique of the existing information. And then from there, you'll have a report about financial projections and risks and so forth. And like I said, I think that'll, that'll be the last of the information gathering. And at that point, you'll have everything you need. It's going to be a matter of looking at that, looking at the risks, looking at the, the likelihoods of success and what it means in the community in the downtown and deciding what you want to do. This is certainly a due diligence step that's essential to the, to the project.
Any more questions? Public comment. Okay, I'm looking for a, a motion on resolution sixteen seventy-three ninety-two.
Madam, Chairman, I move we approve resolution number one six seven three nine two, authorizing the mayor to enter into a consulting agreement with Development Services, Inc. for the purposes stated.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to pass resolution sixteen seventy-three ninety-two, authorizing the mayor to enter into a consulting agreement with Development Services, Inc. All those in favor say. Discussion?
Yeah, just a correction that it is, should be Development Strategies, Inc., not Development Services.
Yes, that's correct. Development Strategies, Inc.
Thank you.
Development Strategies. Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Okay, the motion carries five oh. We have no development business. Is there any other business?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.